Called a order of the town council meeting for the town of New Windsor for September 4th, 2024, if everyone would rise with me and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something on the agenda for council discussion should have had the item to town hall the previous Wednesday of the last previous month. Our meetings are recorded electronically and anyone wishing to speak tonight, and there's a big crowd, so please sign up over here. Approval of minutes from the August 7th, 2024 town council meeting. Do I hear a motion for approval or amendments?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 7th, 2024 as written.
We have a motion second to approve the minutes from the August 7th, 2024 town council meeting. Any questions or comments? All those in favor saying aye. Those opposed, so carry. Mayor's report. You got that, did you? Okay, I'm getting a little better. Able to put it in the folder now. Yeah, big stuff. Attended and presented, I think I mentioned this at the last month's meeting, but because I think it was the day before, maybe not, but attended and presented at the Maryland Municipal League's Housing Symposium in Annapolis. I spoke about the rescue to residents, grant application for the historic firehouse at 211 High Street. All indications at this time on the application are positive. A decision on the application should be made in late October or early November. And I took and passed the online Maryland Municipal League's Carroll Chapter Officers Ethics and Leadership Orientation Training. I didn't know that if I didn't take it, I wouldn't be able to go to the meeting, so as a president of the chapter, I guess I better take it. So, I met with county staff on August 27th for possible funding of town projects. And then the next day on August 28th, we had a virtual meeting with county staff and staff from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development and Seeking Funds for Town Projects. While on the virtual meeting, I asked about the grant application, again, all positive comments. I had multiple conversations with town manager Di mainly to schedule a meeting with State Highway and GMB, a meeting is scheduled with State Highway Administration on September 25th to discuss the street skate project. I've not been real pleased with their progress in the last six months to a year, basically. So, see, well, now we can put that on the fast track. A meeting to be determined with GMB will be to discuss the E and R upgrade of wastewater treatment facility and look at a little closer on the finances, especially if it were to include increase in capacity, just exactly what that means financially to the town. And I had multiple conversations with Public Works Director Myers regarding the issues with the sewer lines lining. That was not the best couple of days where we, we had, you know, the company had door hangers that we were gonna be shut down or for where I live at 412 Church Street. We were supposed to not use our water and sewer facilities because they were lining. Well, that never happened. And then they were supposed to do it the next day, and that didn't happen. And there was a complete lack of communications from the company to Director Myers. I made a phone call. He's made multiple phone calls, so I think everybody is on a little better communication.
I got a little blur in my report, so.
I figured. So, he's, he's been on top of that. And I've started the Carroll County Health Department's food permit application for Musical on the Main and just checked into the possibility of tours of the New Windsor Quarry during that day. And I just got a phone call, voice message that it sounds like it's a go. And that's, you see my meetings there and upcoming events. So, there we are. Any questions or comments? Council committees, community enhancement. I talked to Connor just a little while ago, and with him being new on the council, I'm not expecting a report until he gets his feet a little bit more wet. And I told him I want to sit down with him probably after the meeting and just talk about his experiences, his background, and his interest in the town and what, you know, and take a look at other municipalities. I took a look at all the municipalities in Carroll County to see what committees they have. And there's a few others, but, you know, most of ours are covered by everybody else's. But if there's something new, different that Connor may want to bring to the table, you know, we'll discuss it. So, Connor, I don't know if you have any comments about your brief time on the council? Anybody been approaching you? Phone calls late at night?
Not yet.
Not yet, alright. Public Works Councilman Huffman.
Good evening, everyone. Public Works highlights for the past month. As typical, Public Works has continued with their mowing, string trimming, spraying, weeding, and yard waste pickup. They performed extra mowing and cleanup at the carnival grounds, preparing for National Night Out. Public Works has painted all the curbs red around the fire hydrants in Old Town, except on Route 31 where they are impacted by the water line replacement project. And Public Works patched a huge hole on Tibbetts Lane, as well as some holes on Lambert Avenue. It took more than 20 bags of ready patch to fill the hole on Tibbetts Lane, so it was quite large. So, please contact town hall if you know of any other potholes that need patched, and they'll work that into their schedule and take care of those. Public Works is almost completed repairing the fence at Lyons Park. Should be completed in the next week or so. The planning commission did meet in August. I was not in attendance at that meeting. I don't have a report, an update at this time. The next scheduled meeting is Monday, September 23rd at 6:00 PM. And I did attend the regularly scheduled town council meetings. I attended a Music on the Main meeting. I did pick up the Music on the Main liquor license from the county, so I have that in my possession now, and attended the National Night Out event earlier this month, or last month.
Thank you. What is the sewer? Councilman Hall?
Alright, so the mini activator looks like it's going to be delivered around mid-October. The mini split units for the facilities are ordered and probably going to be installed in the next two weeks. I also had multiple conversations with Director Myers on the sewer lining issues, and more information is coming about that. We, they were also busy prepping and doing some maintenance work now that the weather's getting a little bit colder. They're, they're able to do some maintenance work on the water sewer system in preparation for the colder months. Pressure monitoring devices has also been installed on the water system for future planning and also so that Director Myers can make adjustments on the fly to help keep the pressure within town regulated better. And then the water sewer capacity study is also moving forward. The town is now inputting data for that study. And that's my report.
Thank you. Public Safety and Health, Councilman Cornick.
Good evening, everyone. I do have a brief report for tonight. Relatively quiet month. As mentioned before, I did attend the National Night Out. And then I've got an upcoming events and meetings for the opioid prevention coalition meeting and the Carroll County Chapter of MML Dinner Meeting on the 11th. Just have a brief reminder, but most important reminder that with school being back in, back in and being fully employed with the schools again, it's been fun two days. Just be mindful that, you know, we'll have young pedestrians on the road and school buses traveling on roads that we haven't seen for the last couple of months. There are a lot of stories in all the surrounding counties about the law enforcement cracking down on drivers passing school buses, which we all would imagine is quite important to abide by. So, abide by the laws that prohibit that. So, just a brief reminder about that. That's my report.
Thank you. Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz.
Evening, everyone. I'm not sure, is it showing in the folder? Because I can't get into the folder right now. Yeah, I don't, I had my computer downloaded an update today, so I'll just read it. So, I, I attended the Carroll County Downtown's meeting on August 12th. Just a reminder that the county is organizing a website to publish events to mark the 250th anniversary of the country. And I'm going to be attending the New Windsor Heritage Meeting next week to have them help us to identify historic places in New Windsor and historic events that occurred in New Windsor that can be published. But if anybody here or anybody out there wants to have some input into that, contact me. On another note, the county is giving each community, the tourism office is giving each community a thousand dollars that we can spend on something related to economic development. And I would think community enhancement would fall into that as well. So, I'm going to put that on a work session, agenda upcoming, so we can talk about what we want to do with that. The way it would work is we would have to spend the money and get reimbursed by the county. And the shop small passport will run again this holiday season. More information to come about that. Related to that, as I have in the past several years, I'm going to do a wreath for the Carroll County Arts Council's Festival of Wreaths that highlights New Windsor businesses and organizations. So, if anybody wants to donate or contribute, please contact me. My email is on the town website. And then lastly, we will be doing another highlight of businesses and then I'm going to be meeting with Kim and Dana next week so we can decide what we're going to do this year.
Skip over the community deputy right now. Town manager report.
A couple of things, some of which have already been touched on. The Maryland 31 Water Main Project, Mid-Atlantic remains on schedule. Goal is to complete water main work and temporary pave before winter and the cold weather. The 415, 417 Main Street twin connection, we still only have one signed agreement from 415. Made multiple attempts to contact the owner of 417 without success. We'll have to figure out sooner or later. Likely he's just gonna have to knock on the door and hopefully someone will be home and talk to the owner. So, Mid-Atlantic is progressing in that direction rather, rather quickly here. The next and last section of bypass will be from Green Valley Road, Maryland 75, to the split at Springdale Avenue to tie into the existing water line that was put in last fall. On the Maryland 31 sidewalk retrofit, Mayor Root mentioned that. The meeting is set for September 25th at 9:00. Hopefully that works with Dave and Wayne. I think Dave, Dave was on vacation there. So, the sewer lining again was mentioned previously. Pleasance Construction, they were awarded the lining on, on the contract on June 5th. Council meeting for 210,763. The ARPA money is being used to pay for this project. They did clean the sewer lines on August 22nd, 23rd ahead of the lining and started lining on the 26th. And as mentioned, there were some communication and public notification issues. And also Pleasance experienced equipment failures as well. Director Myers contacted and talked with the vice president of Pleasance and expressed our concerns and path moving forward. And we're waiting on a, for a project schedule and status of the equipment repairs from Pleasance so we can, residents can be notified. Just a note, Pleasance equipment is proprietary, so the replacement of that equipment is, it takes time. It's not something you can just get parts from anywhere. And we believe that talking to vice president about these issues will help get the project back on track. And the HR consultant, Dana Blum, has been reviewing and revising job descriptions in employee handbook. Clerk Treasurer Mangus and Mayor Root and I met, reviewed the latest draft version of the job descriptions, well, mainly the handbook tonight before tonight's meeting. And then Dana is meeting, Dana Blum is meeting with staff on Monday, September 9th. And then she's coordinating a meeting and dates with, for her to meet with the mayor and council. I believe she sent out an email on that with some dates. So, we respectfully request your flexibility in reporting that effort. And then just a plug for the Frank Schaefer Memorial 5K. It's our fourth, fourth year. The date is October 19th, 9:00 AM Wakefield Valley Park, which is 1,000 Fendy Farm Road Westminster. Cost is $25, which includes t-shirt and garbage bag. Donations are always welcome and can be made when registering, registration can be done at runsignup.com and search specifically Franklin G. Schaefer Memorial 5K. There's hundreds, literally hundreds of races and events on that website. So, you have to be very specific to search it. And then the proceeds benefit Westminster Road Runners Club and Carrion Carroll. That's all I got.
Thank you. Public Works Director?
I'm gonna read that. Director Myers is taking care of some personal business. Let me switch that over. Alright, there you go. Okay, so, updates on the water system. Hydraulic modeling by town engineer GMB continues. Town recently met to discuss the next steps, which include a timeline for completion, fire flow test and overall understanding and direction of the, of the project. The New Windsor Fire Department was also in attendance at that meeting and was thankful to be included in that meeting. Water sewer capacity study is ongoing. More information needed from the town, which Director Myers will be providing. Update of the water appropriation permit modification. The town staff met with Hydro Terror, our hydrogeologist, and Carroll County Water Resource Management to discuss the procedural packets supplied by MDE in late July. Displayed our efforts to combine the town's existing water appropriations permit under the same water drainage area. MDE ultimately overruled and countered with an increase in both appropriations, including the Atlee well in the modification. While the increase, while an increase in appropriations can be operationally beneficial, it's up to the town to determine the feasibility of that. The MS5 well, which is out on the town farm on Bowersocks, will need to be connected for the modification or will be removed by MDE, MDE from the appropriations permit. So, it's a condition of, of that modification of the permit. And as Director Myers recommends connecting MS5, we are looking into the cost for that, and it is currently included in the permit and just needs connected. It's already a production well. So, it's just a physical connection and the piping does involve stream crossing and that kind of thing, which we have to look into the permits and Army Corps permits and things like that. The next step for water source redundancy, step one is to complete a hydro, hydrologic investigation and record water demand, aqua-fire sustainability, well, well yield and drought sustainability. Step two will be to notify the public wells within 1,500 feet of the Atlee well. And then step three will be look at cost to connect MS5. It's important to understand and note that MDE will allow all the above modifications only for redundancy and operational flexibility of the town's existing water supply. This is greatly needed and will reduce dependency on the only two active water sources connected to the water, town's water system.
Thank you. And you contacted Ed, right?
Yeah, I, that's, put that in his hands and, yeah.
Very good. Alright, thank you. Treasurers report.
During council meeting last month, the following funds have been invested. $250,000 within a one-year T-bond at 4.1%, 4.15% with AC and V. $250,000 was an eighth-month CD with 4.63 with Sandy Springs. And then $250,000 with a seven-month CD at 4.64 with Farmers and Merchant. Some of those percentages did change. I can't, yeah. HR consultant, like Gary said, we have a meeting set up on Monday, the 9th for staff and then following up with you guys, working out that time. Kayla with ZA are in our auditors will be here on Tuesday, the 10th, and then Thursday, the 12th. Her team will then follow the following week. And then Music on the Main is completely full. So, Main Street's completely full. It's October 5th, 12 through 6:00.
Thank you. Water sewer billing clerk.
Hi. I did review of our delinquent active accounts. And as of 9:04 this morning, I ran the report again, and we have 48 accounts with a total past due over 120 days, $41,799.91. Yes. And I have, very proactive with sending out delinquent notices and door hangers. It has resulted in some shut offs. They were turned on immediately because of payment. Inactive accounts, landlords that have renters that left these accounts over 120 days, $6,809.43. They've also received, the landlords, homeowners have also received separate letters requesting payment. I haven't heard anything back from them yet. I'm hoping to, but I haven't. The newsletter is, I would like content by 9:13. You and I talk about meat next week. I would like to have them in homes by 9:30 so I can get the water bills out on the week of October 7. Regarding newsletter, I've got a couple of dates that I'm going to email to you for confirmation. That's it.
Have you gotten my report yet for the newsletter? I'm stopping emails somewhere. I'll check my email. Alright, thank you. Just to let people know when they are behind on their water sewer bill, Kim and the town will do everything to work with the individuals, the homeowners, whoever, to get things straightened out, you know. So, Kim does have a job between rock and hard place sometimes, but, you know, you know, we need to pay our bills, but we also understand financial hardships of our residents sometimes. So, Kim will do everything she can to, to work everything out. So, thank you. Code Enforcement Officer, Joan.
I was gonna just hand it. Thanks. So, we had, we had six complaints. Most of them were overgrown weeds, grass, trash on properties. Those, all of those residences were sent letters. There was also a complaint about trees overhanging in the alleyway on Pilsen, and that was resolved via email and all those trees were trimmed back out of the alleyway as to not obstruct vehicles. I had a complaint about grass clippings being blown into drain area over on Old Windsor Pike. I did go over there and I do, did not see excessive amount of grass clipping down in the drain area. So, I'm gonna just keep an eye on that. But other than that, that is about it. Any letter that I sent out, they were communicating with me via email, which is extremely helpful, especially because I come into town later in the evening. So, I can observe whatever it is that they did and they can let me know that it's been done. The last couple of complaints I had, that's worked out really well. So, I appreciate all of the residents being extremely cooperative in that manner. And that's all.
Thank you. West Carroll Red Council. Alright, Fire Chief has a report here. August calls, fire 34 calls, EMS calls 72. Year totals, fire 254, EMS 568. There's a 9/11 ceremony at the Carroll County Public, that should be Public Safety Training Center, at 8:30 AM on 9/11 in honor of the 23rd anniversary of that tragic day. Crab feed at the fire hall on Saturday, September 14th. And the emergency services technician, that may be training, but anyway, is an EST program for high school age students who are looking to get involved in emergency services. And CC Visas is looking for students for the 24, 25 school year. And I have listed down there, basically it's from 12 to 3 o'clock every day. They go to their high school and then they go, or if they're homeschooled, they go to their school. And then 12 to 3, go to the training center. And at the end of one school year, they have one, two, three, four, five, six different certifications that they will obtain in one year, which normally would probably take three, maybe four years, depending, you know, the availability of the classes. So, if you know of any high school students that want to fast track training, and this is very, not only does it help our volunteer fire department in Carroll County, but it also gives the student, in my opinion, a little heads up if they want to become a career firefighter in a neighboring town or even in Carroll County now, they'll have all these classes ready to go. So, if you know of any high school students, there's, there's ways of contacting myself or the chief or anybody at the New Windsor Fire Hall. So, if you know of anybody, definitely let them know. Lehigh update, I'm having, as you saw on my meetings, breakfast tomorrow morning with Mayor Jones and the new plant manager, Walter Smith, to just introduce ourselves. And I imagine there'll be a community, community meeting probably in October or November. And every six months to a year, people from, there's, there's a group that are chosen to represent Union Bridge in New Windsor. And we meet up at Lehigh Cement Company, I'm still calling it, but it's Heidelberg. But, and they give us updates and everything. And if there's any issues from New Windsor Union Bridge, they're addressed at that time. So, I'll be meeting the new plant manager tomorrow morning. New business, banner purchase for Musical on the Main. Dana, is that you?
Sure, guys. Alright, so, we have two choices there from Shannon Baum sign, a teardrop or a feather angled flag. It was suggested that we get one by one of the vendors for the beer and wine garden, because they felt like it wasn't advertised enough up there in the park. Prices are there. I think a medium one would be good. And it can be here before Musical on the Main. So, it's just picking which, if you want teardrop or a feathered angle and what you would like it to say.
Dave, opinion?
I think, I think either one is fine. The teardrop, I, I think is fine. And I think it should say just beer and wine garden, or just beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
Just maybe beer and wine, that way.
We don't need to say garden, because beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
Are you concerned that there is no wine in the beer garden?
Wait, Matt, he's not doing wine?
Last year, he just did beer. Did he do wine as well? I was, I don't remember. We can confirm.
Special request.
If we could, yeah, if we can, we just have him grab a couple bottles, and that would be beer and wine.
Yeah, I mean, I can ask him if you want.
Beer and wine, beer and the garden.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fine. And maybe it could be used elsewhere if we needed it to in future events or something.
Any preference on teardrop or feather angled?
You said the teardrop?
I'm, I'm okay with either. The teardrop looks fine.
I think, I think the teardrop is more universal, whereas like the feather angle would look good on this, like a corner right on where that building is. But I don't know where else you would use it. Teardrop, you could put anywhere and it looks good.
We go with the extra large?
You want that one?
Which one you want?
I think the medium's too small. So, either the large, maybe even just the large, I don't know.
11 foot?
11 foot. It's pretty big.
I think 13 is the, well, two. How high is the ceiling in here?
Uh, 12, right?
Is it in here?
No.
How tall is the Christmas tree?
The door, the door is eight, so this is probably, probably 14, 13 or 14.
You know how tall the Christmas tree is?
I was trying to figure out how tall.
Yeah, I was gonna say that Christmas tree, probably 12, 13 foot.
Yeah. That's tall.
I think 11.
11 foot, I think would be fine, yeah.
For three blocks of spare space.
We have a motion to purchase a large 11.2 foot banner with beer and wine. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase the large sign. Any questions or comments? All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
There you are, Dana.
Thank you.
Let's see here.
You have it. You and him. I don't have it, it's me. It occurred to me. So, I hope one of you does.
Back here.
No, the resolution about paying for the dinner, so there you got it.
That's the old one. It's just discussion.
And a resolution.
It's been decided already. Oh, no, that's the old one.
Yeah, this is the old one.
Yes. Sent it to you two. I don't, I sent it all around, so I don't know where it left, where it landed.
You sent me a new one?
Yeah. He asked me to do a new one, I sent him a new one.
Today?
No, it was two weeks ago.
Okay. Last meeting, I said about the MML chapter dinners to be paid for the spouses as well as the members, and while I was out of office, you guys, or some of you passed a resolution and for the council members to pay for their spouses. I just think this is a way of showing appreciation to our spouses for their support of our time away, our sacrifices that we make. And as one council member said, you know, with a fifty dollar meal, you're spending best part of one month's big salary that you get for a meal. So, this resolution would pay, the town would pay for the council member, staff member and spouse. Any questions or comments?
I'll just say a comment that I would be opposed to that, just under the basis that I do understand that it is a nice gesture. I think that asking the town residents to foot the bill of a spouse's dinner would just be unacceptable in my mind.
All right. Thank you. Do I hear that resolution would be oh nine oh four twenty-four? Do I hear a motion to adopt resolution number oh nine oh four two four?
I'm going to just have discussion, even though we're not really in the order. I think that I was the interim mayor when we passed this, so I couldn't, I didn't vote on it, but I feel like we are put in an impossible decision with this kind of a situation because while I a hundred percent agree with what you just said, and I think that most of the people on this council, I for one intend four meetings a month at least for the town council. So, I don't think it's a big deal to have my spouse get a dinner a couple of times a year, but, but it sounds like I'm taking money from the taxpayers if I support that. So, I'm just going to go on the record saying that's how I feel, but I'm not going to make a motion to introduce it.
Any other comments, feelings?
I, I will agree with Constant Woman Schultz, and, you know, it's just the optics that look terrible on this, and as, as Kim said, it's kind of like a no win-win situation. I wish we were never put in that position, but now we are, and it's, it's, it's very hard to support without looking like we're taking advantage of the town.
I don't think we're taking advantage of the town, but...
I'll make a comment on that. You know, I think that, I come from the perspective, I certainly understand that, you know, our responsibility in making sure that we spend the town's money appropriately, and it is somewhat of a political situation because the town does, some may perceive that the town, we're spending the town's money, but I don't think it's frivolous in the sense that my spouse spends a lot of time supporting what I do on behalf of the town. So, if folks have an issue with that, I'll frankly tell them, listen, she's out there supporting me. While I may have the responsibility of doing the town's work, she's certainly there supporting on most, every event that I'm, that I'm involved in. So, and, and further, I think I probably attend four meetings a month myself and at the sacrifice of my family. And for the hundred and fifteen dollars that we get, I'm thankful for it. I don't do it for the money, but I certainly, I take away from my family to do this. So, I'm in favor of the resolution. There you have it.
And if you don't want this resolution, then I guess we do away with the Christmas breakfast. Spending taxpayer money there. Will you attend to that, right?
That was one thing that we put in the resolution. Difference is that we have one event where we get the town for Christmas, everybody together so that we can say thank you for those, those times, those sacrifices for the family, whereas every, you know, month or quarterly, it doesn't make sense.
Well, it doesn't make sense then if you're going to do one and not the other, so you're going to have to not do anything, so then we're not going to have the Christmas if you don't pass this thing.
That doesn't make sense. I mean, the Christmas, the Christmas breakfast, we don't charge for. If we were to charge per seat, I would happily pay for my spouse to go.
We're using taxpayers' money, so it's the same thing, right? Using taxpayers' money for MML dinners, using taxpayer dollars for the breakfast. It's the same, same money we're spending.
Sure, if you want to start charging for that, I'd be in favor.
I don't want to change, charge. That again is appreciation, and I'm just trying to pass that on appreciation to our spouses. So, if I don't hear a motion for adoption, then it drops, but I hate to see the Christmas breakfast go away.
I still don't see how the Christmas breakfast would go away, because the resolution that stands says that the Christmas dinner would, the town would pay for the spouses and elected officials.
That's for MML, not for our breakfast.
All right. If you want to get rid of that, that's, that's up to you.
Do I hear a motion to adopt resolution oh nine oh four two four?
I'll make the motion.
Do I hear a second? No second? It does. Thank you, Kevin, for your support. Any other new business? Any old business? Developers rights and responsibilities.
So, we talked about this at two different council meetings. First was Attorney Ostrander provided a draft ordinance to amend Town Code, Chapter one seventy-five subdivision of land that would add Article nine, developer rights and responsibilities agreement, agreements. That was at the June twenty-fourth work session, and that draft is in the folder for this evening. And then, again, was discussed at the July second council meeting where Attorney Ostrander provided a PowerPoint from Carroll County, who at the time is considering a DRRA as well. And at the July meeting, the mayor and council wanted time to review and consider if they want this for the town. Michelle sent a draft version of the...
The county planning commission has, they, their role, just like your planning commission, is to review and recommend or not recommend to the Board of County Commissioners legislation involving land use, et cetera. After significant discussion, this was not something they did lightly. I bet we talked about it at three or four different meetings. They did provide a draft to the Board of County Commissioners, which I just got yesterday afternoon and forwarded today to, well, I, you know, today at like, what, four o'clock, to Gary when I realized that it had come into my mailbox. So, I think right now, we're sort of back to, is this a concept that the council is interested in creating a system for negotiating with developers on whatever future projects might be? You, it's been a while since we talked about it, so you may recall, and you may not, that it is purely a negotiating tool. You don't have to do one, you don't have to enter into one. If you want something from a developer that the developer does not want to provide, there is no agreement. If the developer wants something from the town that the town is not willing to provide, there is no agreement, and everything just goes forward under the existing subdivision and site plan development phases. I think this whole issue came up because there's been recent conversation on a few larger projects. One of the things that the county spent a lot of time on was, should there be size restrictions? Should there be minimums? Should there be maximums? Should it apply to commercial, residential, both? There's a lot of, a lot of things to think about when you're doing something like this. So, we can, I mean, you can talk about it however you want. I think it's about half here just to get it back nearer to the front burner.
Did they mention, the county mentioned specifically on how, in terms of determining or not determining size, what, what, what were they using? Were they using acreage? Were they using lots, lots? Were they using EDUs? Were they using water and sewer demands?
Sort of, yes.
All those things? Or...
Expressly acreage and number of lots. Or number of units, because if it were a condominium development, you have one lot, but you could have many, many units. I don't recall that there was expressly reference to EDUs. Of course, the county system is different because everywhere in the county is not on county water, but as a practical matter, a big project like this is going to need something, public, public water, which is reliable. So, I don't think there's expressly EDU in theirs, but that doesn't mean it can't go in yours.
Anybody else have any? I'm going to add something, but I'll leave it open.
Dave?
Well, as I think I mentioned last time, I think it's, I think it's a good tool to have in our toolbox, especially since we don't have to use it, they can be used in a situational, situationally dependent environment. So, if there was reasons that we needed to pull out this tool and negotiate something, we could enter into that agreement. There was, if I recall during our conversations, some concerns with it that if we were to enter into one with a developer and that developer flipped it to someone else, that it would also go to them or would...
Most contractual agreements like that would be applicable to a new purchaser.
It seems like there was something in there that gave us pause.
That I brought up was the issue of being locked in in many years. So, say this contract was drafted up, that ended up being very bad for the town. The next election cycle, if the town decided to bring in people that, that were against this, couldn't get out of it. It was a, it's kind of like you're locked in for the five, ten years or whatever.
It's generally five in the state law, but you can modify that. That having been said, that's exactly the purpose of it. It locks you, it locks the developer, and some jurisdictions are very uncomfortable with that and they don't want to do it, and that's a perfectly legitimate position to take. But that's the whole, the whole concept. Both sides, give and take, and the give and the take has to be both mutual and mutually acceptable, and if it isn't, everybody has wasted a fair amount of time, but everybody just goes home.
I mean, I will say, at this stage, I mean, it is like what Dave said, the ordinance here is just to enable that. It's not saying that we have to.
It's not an agreement.
It's not saying any specification, so it is a good tool to have in a tool chest. Now, if, if that ever comes to fruition, maybe it won't, but, you know, without this, we can't do it at all.
And this, the draft that you were provided was a very preliminary draft that doesn't have a whole lot, it, it's pretty much a mirror of the state legislation. So, you can add things to that. For example, if you wanted to put in specific references to EDUs, sewer systems, upgrades, et cetera, even as just, these things can be addressed in your agreement. You could do that. Now, it's too soon unless you have a project to say, this is the number of EDUs we need for you to provide, because who knows what the project would be. But you can, you can modify what was the original presentation for your own needs, but, and I know we're not ready to go into, into that deeply into the weeds tonight, but if this is a concept that you all are interested in, you might even want to think about dedicating some time. I know Gary's going to hit me, but, so I know you all are very busy and I know all of your meetings are very busy. This isn't something that has to be done right away, but you do potentially have some things looming, so you probably don't want to put it off till twenty twenty-six, if it's something you're interested in doing, and if not, we say, well, that was a waste of twenty minutes and we all go home.
Explain again what this is up and above beneficial wise versus the public works agreement.
Well, a public works agreement doesn't happen until the end. And that's one of the big differences. So, if you are at the point where you've had all your plans approved, because you don't get your PWA until your plans are approved, by the time your plans are all approved, everybody has spent a lot of time, developers have spent a lot of money, and so has the town in, you know, in dealing with the county and reviewers and all of that stuff, a lot of, a lot of energy. At that point, it's really kind of late to say, oh, and by the way, we, we would really need this and this and this from you, unless this and this and this are all in your statutory requirements. And that, that is an option, is to review all of your development requirements, subdivision and site plan. You haven't, we haven't had a new major commercial site plan, that was bells since Tibbetts Lane went up practically. So, that, the main thing, the main difference with the PWA is when those things happen. The DRRA happens at the, at A, and the public works agreement happens at like W, after which construction happens. That's why I didn't want to go all the way to Z. So, so that's really the primary difference.
Do you know how many municipalities are using this?
Tony Town has used it on a couple of occasions. Hampstead has used it once for a project that may or may not be nearing its auto termination phase, now that I'm thinking about that. So, I'm really a little surprised, I haven't heard about that. The county is, you know, considering adopting one. I, I think that's all in this county, and somewhere in, I think in this, in that little PowerPoint thing I sent around, there's...
Prairie County.
I mean, the county did, I'm not taking, I have no pride of ownership in any of these county things, because the county staff works like progiants over there on this stuff, they really do, I've been impressed. But there's something as to who has it. Couple of, couple of counties had it and repealed it. And I'm not sure why, and I don't know that anybody was sure why, and political, politics, you know, things change, this is, y'all know that.
So, in that PowerPoint that we got, that was June eighteenth when they were working through things, one of the things that said with Mako's assistance, staff has reached out to all counties in Maryland with the following questions. Do you have a DRRA? If yes, what are the benefits and challenges? And did your jurisdiction previously use DRAs but never learned?
There might actually be even some updated information in the, they like PowerPoints. In the next PowerPoint, I, I can look and see if that's in there. But yeah, it's a, it's a really, it's an interesting concept, and we worked hard on doing the one in Hampstead, and that was for a purely residential unit, but it was big and it was going to be over multiple times, and there were a couple of major roads that had to be addressed and who's building what, and, you know, that kind of thing. So, it was big.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, first, a couple of things, we're talking, we're talking major developments here. We're not talking the four lots subdivision over at the corner of Pilsen and Lambert. It's not, not where it's going to come into play. Both Director Myers and myself believe that this would be... Um, both Director Myers and myself believe that this would be important and ben- and beneficial to the town, um, uh, to protect the town's already taxed infrastructure, uh, primarily water, sewer, storm drains, roads, things like that, um, from potential major developments. Um, again, the major developments could be residential or commercial. It could be, you know, ins- inside of town with expansion, they could be annexed in from outside of town. But these are big projects that would have major impacts on the town. Um, so I think, we think that those are, are important, that would be a good thing to have. Um, it, it allows, it would allow for several things, uh, just to mention a few is the town can, can take control over what can and can't happen upfront. It allows for transparency, coordination, planning of these developments and infrastructure. Um, and includes, typically includes, and I would recommend this, includes public meetings and input from town residents and businesses. Because not only does it affect our infrastructure, but it affects residents and businesses.
Yeah, the state law requires a fair amount of notice. And the county, I think, requires even more in their draft.
Um, a- again, it protects our infrastructure, most importantly, water and sewer systems and capacity. And, um, protects the town financially and makes the town, puts the onus of, of the, on the developer, the, for the financial responsibilities. Um, we, like I said, we believe that this is a good thing to have. It's something that we can have in place and not use, but our opinion is it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it. And I think we should look at, especially the new one, and, and look at some of the questions that they're incorporating and, and if we, if we're gonna go forward to consider putting them in, in our version.
Now, is there like a template from Hampstead or Tony Town?
Actually, I think the draft, the Hampstead and Tony Town and the original draft I sent you are very similar. And they are all very similar to the state law. I think Tony Town did theirs first, actually. Uh, before they had all the upheaval with their legal department. I'm sorry, I couldn't resist that. But, uh, the, and the county actually used a lot of the Frederick County. Counties are a different scale. Uh, the Frederick County ordinance, um, that was adopted and modified after a lawsuit, that someone said that the county commissioners didn't get enough good stuff from the developer and challenged it. And the court said, no, there's not a requirement that they get enough good stuff from the developer. At which point I think they modified their ordinance to add the good stuff. Uh, the phrase is enhanced benefits, which was another thing we talked about for an hour, just that language. It's, it's a lot to think about. But I don't believe they have, my understanding is that Frederick has not done a new one since they passed that modification. But they also have a requirement, I think, and I apologize for not knowing this exactly, but like, it's only applicable over there to like a project of four hundred or more lots. Well, there's no place in Carroll County is gonna have a project of four hundred or more lots unless really, really radical things happen here. So, um, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot to consider.
All right.
I keep saying that, there's a lot to consider because there is.
So we just need approval to move forward?
Well, you know, I don't know you need approval to move forward. Uh, I think if you wanna move forward, you say, let's sit at, uh, next one or the one after that, uh, work session, we'll set aside a half an hour, forty-five minutes. I know that's a lot of time, but, you know, everybody's gonna have a thought, you're gonna have things you're gonna wanna talk about. I think that's the best way to do it, cause that's what I think.
In October?
I, I don't, I, I always defer to Gary on schedule.
Well, you got it in September.
Well, I don't have my, my, um, agendas yet, but not that far.
Just take a look and put it on one or the other.
Yeah, October, uh, well, September sixteenth is a work session and October twenty-first is a work session.
I'll still be here, yeah. No, I, I have a long, no, I, not, I'm not like going away, I have a long weekend, um, in October, but it's after that.
All right. Thank you.
Get it on the work.
Don't get your hopes up, I'm not.
Well, I gave you that side that, that.
Any other old business? All right. Any residents' concerns? All right.
George Crater came and signed in, second.
You have an announcement?
Not an announcement, I have a second. Um, for the upcoming, an upcoming work session, I, I think that maybe we should have a little discussion on the, um, delinquent water and sewer, um, bills. Um, considering it looks like we maybe have forty-eight of them that are pretty outstanding. I'm not saying we don't have a process, but I think the council needs to understand the process and make sure the town is doing everything we can, um, to collect that, that money. So I'd like to, to get that on a work session for discussion. And, um, also maybe at the next meeting, uh, Joan Court Code Enforcement Officer, maybe we could get an update on, um, vehicles that are, that, you know, we had big discussions about vehicles that were still un- untagged and in yards and trailers and stuff. And I know you were working pretty hard on getting some of those and sent some letters out and maybe you'd like to get a status report on what's going on with those.
Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get my agenda set early, I like it.
All right. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
All those in favor, sing five, we can sing aye. Gary?
Hour.
You made it.
Fifty-six sec, uh, minutes.